I'm going to call this meeting the Oskaloosa City Council order. Today is Monday, October 7th, 2019. We start by dedication by Pastor Bruce Winter, Central United Methodist Church.
Let's pray together. God, we thank you for this beautiful day, for the sunshine after the rain. We thank you for this season and as we look forward to an abundant harvest. We thank you too, God, for all the construction projects that are going on around our city and ask if those things might be able to be completed before the cold weather sets in. Guide and direct in that. And Lord, we thank you that you have entrusted the overseeing of this city into capable hands. We thank you for the men and women that serve on this council. We'd ask God that you would give them wisdom as they work together and sense of unity for the common good. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Burnett, Caligeri.
Here.
Joss.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Addison.
Here.
Walling.
Here.
Yates.
Here.
Thank you. First up is the opportunity for community comments. This item is reserved to receive comments from the community for concerns whether or not they are included on the current agenda. The community is encouraged to come and speak before the mayor and city council, asking your statements briefly, time limited to no more than three minutes. Any questions are to be asked of the city staff, council members, or the mayor prior to speaking to the full council, so concerns can be properly researched and perhaps answered away from the meeting. Comments are to be directed to the mayor and the city council alone. Is there anyone who would like to speak to it? Seeing that, we'll move on. This next item is the consent agenda, and these are all items that are routine in nature. I did want to just point out, there was only one item, it's the appointment of, here we go, to the Historic Preservation Commission with Ross Knob listed and his qualifications are in the packet. Do we have a motion supporting that? That will set a check. Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussions? Roll call, please.
Walling.
Yes.
Yates.
Yes.
Caligeri.
Yes.
Joss.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Addison.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Gets us into the regular agenda. Item A, this is the announcement of vacancies we have on various boards and commissions. First is the airport commission. We have one vacancy for a six-year term that begins January 1st of 2020 and one vacancy for a term that's ending on December 31st of 2021. Board of Adjustment, there's two vacancies for five-year terms that begin January 1st of 2020 and one vacancy for a term ending December 31st of 2020. Building Code Board of Appeals, we have one vacancy for an ex officio member. Historic Preservation Commission, there's three vacancies for three-year terms that begin January 1st of 2020. There's one vacancy for an alternate member for a three-year term. Mahaska County Solid Waste Management Commission and Recycling Committee, there are five vacancies for one-year terms beginning on January 1st of 2020. The Mahaska County Emergency Management, there's one vacancy for a two-year term that begins on January 1st of 2020. At Stephen Memorial Animal Shelter, there's one vacancy for a two-year term beginning January 1st of 2020. And on the Water Board, we have one vacancy, it's for an unexpired term that's ending on June 2022 due to the recent resignation of the state chairman. Moving on to item B. This is an opportunity for a public hearing. We're considering an ordinance amending Oskaloosa Municipal Code Title 17 zoning by incorporating some corrections and minor modifications that include setbacks in off-street parking and payment standards. Let's see, the recommendation was approved by a 5-0 vote following a public hearing at the September 4th, planning a zoning commission meeting. It corrects various errors, asks missing information, clarifies certain standards, and makes some minor amendments that are decided to ease development restraints. The amendments also include provision to remove gravel and stone as a surface option in commercial districts in response to council's goal of improving our gateways and courts. More information is to be found in the communications sheet to the planning of zoning commission that's in our packet. I'll open the floor to the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this? Seeing that, I'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion supporting this first reading of the ordinance?
Seven.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
When we say gravel and stones, does that include seal coat?
We are not eliminating seal coat, so that will still be an option.
Or just loose, correct?
Correct.
Thanks.
Other comments or questions?
This will be on anything new?
Yes, or something that was triggered by a site plan.
Do you have any comments? Roll call, please.
Yates.
Yes.
Caligeri.
Okay, that passes. Item C, is to consider a resolution approving the plan's specifications, formal contract, and estimated cost for Division 1 of the Phase 3 sanitary sewer system improvements project. There's a public hearing attached to this as well. The Garden Associates has prepared the plan's specs for Division 1 of the Phase 3 sanitary sewer improvements project. This project is the third phase of the plan of action that was submitted to the Iowa Department of Natural Resources in February of 2015 as a result of a notice of violation, which was dated September 29th of 2014, for bypassing raw sewage from portions of the collection system and at the wastewater treatment plants. Scope of the work for this project is a combination of multiple sewer projects, including the reconstruction of sanitary sewer pipes and manholes in various locations throughout the city. The base bid for the project includes 2,457 linear feet of sewer pipe reconstruction and reconstruction of 19 manholes located near F Avenue and E Avenue between Market and E Street. The preliminary engineering cost estimate for the base bid, $1,0373,778, and there are two more bid alternates with cost estimates of $380,365 and $174,395 that will be in addition to the base bid. Base bid for this project has an estimated start date of October 21st of 2019, total of 1,073 working days, and additional working days are allotted for the bid alternates. So I'll open the public hearing, is there anyone who would like to speak to this? Seeing that, I'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion supporting this resolution? Some move. Second. Okay, any discussion on it? Roll call, please.
Caligeri.
Yes.
Joss.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Addison.
Yes.
Walling.
Yes.
Yates.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item D, is to consider a resolution rejecting a bid for Division 1 of the Phase 3 sanitary sewer system improvements project. So Division 1 of the Phase 3 sanitary sewer improvements project, it was advertised, bids received are publicly read on September 23rd of 2019. Base bid for the project, as mentioned before in the description, was $1,373,778. One sealed bid was received from J&amp;K Contracting. Base bid from J&amp;K was for $2,016,414, which is $642,636, which is 46.8% higher than the engineer's estimate, and since it exceeds the budget amount, of course. The engineering consultant for the project, Garden Associates, reviewed the bid and is recommended to reject the bid from J&amp;K Contracting and rebid at a future date. So if the project would be awarded, construction would start on October 21st, total of 140 working days, and there would be probably also an additional $100,000 as a construction contingency. Do we have a motion supporting the resolution to reject the bid?
Seven.
Thank you.
Okay, any discussion on it?
It's just a question, you know, this is part of a plan to address issues, maybe the DNR about forward. Are we running up against any timeline if we reject this? Does this don't need, what are we supposed to do for them?
So according to the project staff, we're being informed of what's happening. Obviously, they're waiting for council action tonight to relay the information. As it stands today, the construction window, authorization window, was a pretty reliable one for this project, and so I don't know that we're necessarily exceeding issues if we rebid it. We're still going to have it open, open and ready to go for the same period of time. So it might be a better time for us to receive bids. Hopefully, the contractors are clearing out their schedules and then starting to think about the next year's work. What we're hearing is the same story that we had before. This work is a little bit more difficult than the work that are being presented in other places like subdivisions where there's not a lot of conflict or risk. Something like this is a little more complicated, and so I think there's less interest in working on a project like this in general, like you can go do something easy. That's a long answer to your question, but the idea is, yes, they're informed what's happening. I think it'd be a poor decision on our behalf to do the full of the project that essentially is well beyond the original estimate, engineer's estimate. The initial estimate was high, that was added to again, and we couldn't even get the base bid, let alone the three alternates that we need. So what we're doing is we're sliding the projects out, and that's going to be communicated to the DNR, and again, as long as they know in advance what's not been told, is there okay with those things? I'm looking to our engineers and the audience, and ahead of us, hopefully that's good. Kielish, you've had more direct conversations with them.
We have given a plan of action to the DNR one time, and the plan of action is a plan. DNR has always been in agreement that as long as we finish the plan, they are fine with this. Now timeframe, we have notified that we are with the budget, and with the budget being growing every day, with the cost estimates growing every day, we have told that we may take longer, and they are fine with that process.
Thank you.
And I think, again, it goes back to another, just the timing, but when you look at what our rates are comparatively to other places in the state, they're pretty high, and I think that's something that we continue to go back to the DNR, and say, well, we have a little bit of grease on this, and I think they've been receptive to that, but we have to make sure that they're aware of that well in advance. We can't just not do the projects, and we're committing to them, the US Council have authorized, borrowing through SRF, state funding funds, so it's not like we're just ignoring what the plan was. We're trying to actively do that, and I think that's why they're okay with us pushing this off a little bit.
This is just the second one we've had. We delayed another one because of one bid, and it's still out there, right? Correct. What's the projected timing for rebidding that?
Sometime in January, February.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Kielish. Any other comments or questions? Do we have a motion and a second? Roll call, please.
Joss.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Addison.
Yes.
Walling.
Yes.
Yates.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item D, consider a resolution approving amendment number one to the agreement with the SVPA Architects. On April 15th of 2019, city council approved resolution number 19-4-60, entering into a professional services agreement with SVPA Architects for the purpose of designing an early childhood education and recreation center project. The project at that time was estimated to include 60,000 square foot building, had a construction budget of $16,345,000, and SVPA's design fee was based on 6.79% of the construction cost, total of $1,110,000. On August 16th of 2019, city council approved resolution number 19-07-125. It's a resolution approving the project's schematic design documents. The project's schedule has experienced an increase in scope, changing the building footprint to 88,250 square feet, with a total construction cost now of $26,659,250. The increase to the estimated construction cost for the building has a direct impact on the design fees that are being charged by SVPA. As previously noted, SVPA's design fee is calculated at a rate of 6.79% of the project's estimated construction cost, and accordingly, fee amendment number one to the previously proposed agreement has been presented by SVPA in the amount of $700,000, bringing the total design contract to $1,810,000. Project schedule, and we get asked this from time to time, so the schematic design had to be done by August 29th. Design development documents completed by November 7th of 2019. Construction document complete by February 11th of 2020, and then accept project bids and award them on March of 2020. And then the construction phase starts in April of 2020 and then finishes up in September of 2021. So our staff is recommending we approve the amendment to the agreement with SVPA as presented. Do we have a motion to that back?
Some move. Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I assume you all know where this extra money's coming from. Are you wondering, or do you already know?
I don't know.
Well, the data time. Mike, do you care?
So for this particular item, I did talk to the school district about how they'd like to process the bill, and I'll get to that's my walling's point in a minute, but just from the standpoint of the district is in for the $6.5 million, and we're in for the maximum amount that we can through 7.5. I can't ever get there. That's a block.
What is it though?
It's 7.5. Before I said 7.65, so I'm all over the board. 7.5 million dollars. And then we're in for the maximum allocation of 75% through the block office sales tax. So we've been collecting that sales tax in, and as it goes, it's coming in, but then we've also, because of the 28d agreement, have been invoicing the district, so it's 63% and 37%. So 63% is the city, 37% is the school. And so with this change order, we continue to do that, and the additional costs will come from that, essentially taking the school district 7.5 down and using our block office sales tax. And that's great, that gets us to one point. But ultimately, when it comes time to construct the project, as discussed at the last meeting, there will need to be fundraising and donor cash, and that would offset the additional scope. And again, that's like the community fundraising component, and donors, you hear in donors, and grants, that's the expectation. So we'll use the city, we'll use the school district money, we'll use grant money, we'll use donor money, and we'll use community contributions through fundraising.
What kind of grants can be applied for a project like this?
So Division Iowa, which is the tax grant community action toward, so the YCA is working on that, because it's a committee that's led by the YCA, so they're working on that application. The Daily Trust would be another location, Tele World Supreme is another. We could certainly seek MCCF and Mahaska Community Foundation, that's a lower dollar amount. So we're trying to pick off a few of the larger ones, and then potentially, there could be a rise of the grant size grant in Iowa DOT, we're still waiting that possibility.
Other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Moore.
Yes.
Addison.
Yes.
Walling.
Yes.
Yates.
Yes.
Caligeri.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item D, is to consider a resolution approving amendment number one to the agreement with the SVPA Architects. On April 15th of 2019, city council approved resolution number 19-4-60, entering into a professional services agreement with SVPA Architects for the purpose of designing an early childhood education and recreation center project. The project at that time was estimated to include 60,000 square foot building, had a construction budget of $16,345,000, and SVPA's design fee was based on 6.79% of the construction cost, total of $1,110,000. On August 16th of 2019, city council approved resolution number 19-07-125. It's a resolution approving the project's schematic design documents. The project's schedule has experienced an increase in scope, changing the building footprint to 88,250 square feet, with a total construction cost now of $26,659,250. The increase to the estimated construction cost for the building has a direct impact on the design fees that are being charged by SVPA. As previously noted, SVPA's design fee is calculated at a rate of 6.79% of the project's estimated construction cost, and accordingly, fee amendment number one to the previously proposed agreement has been presented by SVPA in the amount of $700,000, bringing the total design contract to $1,810,000. Project schedule, and we get asked this from time to time, so the schematic design had to be done by August 29th. Design development documents completed by November 7th of 2019. Construction document completed by February 11th of 2020, and then accept project bids and award them on March of 2020. And then the construction phase starts in April of 2020 and then finishes up in September of 2021. So our staff is recommending we approve the amendment to the agreement with SVPA as presented. Do we have a motion to that back?
Some move. Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I assume you all know where this extra money's coming from. Are you wondering, or do you already know?
I don't know.
Well, the data time. Mike, do you care?
So for this particular item, I did talk to the school district about how they'd like to process the bill, and I'll get to that's my walling's point in a minute, but just from the standpoint of the district is in for the $6.5 million, and we're in for the maximum amount that we can through 7.5. I can't ever get there. That's a block.
What is it though?
It's 7.5. Before I said 7.65, so I'm all over the board. 7.5 million dollars. And then we're in for the maximum allocation of 75% through the block office sales tax. So we've been collecting that sales tax in, and as it goes, it's coming in, but then we've also, because of the 28d agreement, have been invoicing the district, so it's 63% and 37%. So 63% is the city, 37% is the school. And so with this change order, we continue to do that, and the additional costs will come from that, essentially taking the school district 7.5 down and using our block office sales tax. And that's great, that gets us to one point. But ultimately, when it comes time to construct the project, as discussed at the last meeting, there will need to be fundraising and donor cash, and that would offset the additional scope. And again, that's like the community fundraising component, and the donors, you hear in donors, and grants, that's the expectation. So we'll use the city, we'll use the school district money, we'll use grant money, we'll use donor money, and we'll use community contributions through fundraising.
What kind of grants can be applied for a project like this?
So Division Iowa, which is the tax grant community action toward, so the YCA is working on that, because it's a committee that's led by the YCA, so they're working on that application. The Daily Trust would be another location, Tele World Supreme is another. We could certainly seek MCCF and Mahaska Community Foundation, that's a lower dollar amount. So we're trying to pick off a few of the larger ones, and then potentially, there could be a rise of the grant size grant in Iowa DOT, we're still waiting that possibility.
Other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Moore.
Yes.
Addison.
Yes.
Walling.
Yes.
Yates.
Yes.
Caligeri.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item D, is to consider a resolution approving amendment number one to the agreement with the SVPA Architects. On April 15th of 2019, city council approved resolution number 19-4-60, entering into a professional services agreement with SVPA Architects for the purpose of designing an early childhood education and recreation center project. The project at that time was estimated to include 60,000 square foot building, had a construction budget of $16,345,000, and SVPA's design fee was based on 6.79% of the construction cost, total of $1,110,000. On August 16th of 2019, city council approved resolution number 19-07-125. It's a resolution approving the project's schematic design documents. The project's schedule has experienced an increase in scope, changing the building footprint to 88,250 square feet, with a total construction cost now of $26,659,250. The increase to the estimated construction cost for the building has a direct impact on the design fees that are being charged by SVPA. As previously noted, SVPA's design fee is calculated at a rate of 6.79% of the project's estimated construction cost, and accordingly, fee amendment number one to the previously proposed agreement has been presented by SVPA in the amount of $700,000, bringing the total design contract to $1,810,000. Project schedule, and we get asked this from time to time, so the schematic design had to be done by August 29th. Design development documents completed by November 7th of 2019. Construction document completed by February 11th of 2020, and then accept project bids and award them on March of 2020. And then the construction phase starts in April of 2020 and then finishes up in September of 2021. So our staff is recommending we approve the amendment to the agreement with SVPA as presented. Do we have a motion to that back?
Some move. Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I assume you all know where this extra money's coming from. Are you wondering, or do you already know?
I don't know.
Well, the data time. Mike, do you care?
So for this particular item, I did talk to the school district about how they'd like to process the bill, and I'll get to that's my walling's point in a minute, but just from the standpoint of the district is in for the $6.5 million, and we're in for the maximum amount that we can through 7.5. I can't ever get there. That's a block.
What is it though?
It's 7.5. Before I said 7.65, so I'm all over the board. 7.5 million dollars. And then we're in for the maximum allocation of 75% through the block office sales tax. So we've been collecting that sales tax in, and as it goes, it's coming in, but then we've also, because of the 28d agreement, have been invoicing the district, so it's 63% and 37%. So 63% is the city, 37% is the school. And so with this change order, we continue to do that, and the additional costs will come from that, essentially taking the school district 7.5 down and using our block office sales tax. And that's great, that gets us to one point. But ultimately, when it comes time to construct the project, as discussed at the last meeting, there will need to be fundraising and donor cash, and that would offset the additional scope. And again, that's like the community fundraising component, and the donors, you hear in donors, and grants, that's the expectation. So we'll use the city, we'll use the school district money, we'll use grant money, we'll use donor money, and we'll use community contributions through fundraising.
What kind of grants can be applied for a project like this?
So Division Iowa, which is the tax grant community action toward, so the YCA is working on that, because it's a committee that's led by the YCA, so they're working on that application. The Daily Trust would be another location, Tele World Supreme is another. We could certainly seek MCCF and Mahaska Community Foundation, that's a lower dollar amount. So we're trying to pick off a few of the larger ones, and then potentially, there could be a rise of the grant size grant in Iowa DOT, we're still waiting that possibility.
Other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Moore.
Yes.
Addison.
Yes.
Walling.
Yes.
Yates.
Yes.
Caligeri.
Yes.
Joss.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Addison.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item D, is to consider a resolution approving an authorizing execution of the infrastructure reimbursement agreement with the Oskaloosa Municipal Water Department, approving a transfer of funds, approving in advance of funds, and directing the filing of a related certification under Iowa Code Section 403.19. So what's going on? The Oskaloosa Municipal Water Department retaining the services of Garden Associates to complete the design of the water system improvements in South H Street, South M Street, and 11th Avenue West. The improvements will service a planned housing development, a current industrial expansion, as well as upgrade the existing main within a system that was undersized to accommodate growth. As discussed by the Water Board on May 13th and on September 9th, this project is a unique opportunity to partner with the Water Department, the city, and with Musco. The existing water system flows in the area designed for improvements don't have sufficient flow for the fire suppression needs of Musco's MSO expansion project. As a result, Musco would be required to install a new fire suppression tank and pump in the amount of $170,000. Rather than constructing that system just for their own building, Musco's agreed to partner with the Water Department and the city to contribute those funds to a broader system improvement in the area. So the Water Board agreed with this proposal and worked with city representatives to identify the means to bridge the gap between the Water Department funds in the amount of $245,000 and Musco funds in the amount of $170,000 to complete the needed infrastructure improvements. Estimated project cost for all of the improvements is estimated at $600,000. City staff is recommending the city council approve a reimbursement agreement between the city and the Water Department to help facilitate the important economic development and the infrastructure project. The reimbursement agreement outlines that the city will front the Water Department up to $185,000 to complete the project. The city's money will be last in, and the Water Department will reimburse the city one half of the funds actually contributed by the city, not to exceed $92,500 over a three-to-five period, three-to-five year period of time. The three-to-five year timeframe allows the Water Department an opportunity to absorb the costs of the project into their budget in a more manageable manner, and the Water Department can always repay the city sooner if adjustment to their capital fund is made accordingly during their annual budget process. There's a lot there. Do we have a motion to support? Any discussion?
They improved that housing development areas on this, but not right.
It does, yeah.
Yeah.[625.37]
The existing water system flows in the area designed for improvements don't have sufficient power for fire suppression needs of Musco's MSO expansion project. As a result, Musco would be required to install a new fire suppression tank and pump in the amount of $170,000. Rather than constructing that system just for their own building, Musco has agreed to partner with the Water Department and the city to contribute those funds to a broader system improvement in the area. So the Water Board agreed with this proposal and worked with city representatives to identify the means to bridge the gap between the Water Department funds in the amount of $245,000 and Musco funds in the amount of $170,000 to complete the needed infrastructure improvements. Estimated project cost for all of the improvements is estimated at $600,000. City staff is recommending the city council approve a reimbursement agreement between the city and the Water Department to help facilitate the important economic development and the infrastructure project. The reimbursement agreement outlines that the city will front the Water Department up to $185,000 to complete the project. The city's money will be last in, and the Water Department will reimburse the city one half of the funds actually contributed by the city, not to exceed $92,500 over a three-to-five period, three-to-five year period of time. A three-to-five year timeframe allows the Water Department an opportunity to absorb the costs of the project into their budget in a more manageable manner, and the Water Department can always repay the city sooner if adjustment to their capital fund is made accordingly during our annual budget process. There's a lot there. Do you have a motion to support? Any discussion?
That improved that housing development areas on his book, right?
It does, yeah.
Any comments or questions?
One comment I'd have, if you've ever seen a building, you had to have one of these tanks put in. One that comes to mind is the Walmart South of Centerville had to do it. They didn't have enough water. And that's probably the first time I ran into it, and it's like, okay, is this really the way to fight a fire? And it's acceptable.
I'm sharing what I know. Do you have no further comments? Roll call, please.
Patterson? Yes. Wallin?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Palger?
Yes.
Dross?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
That passes. Adam G. This is to consider a resolution amendment to the City of Osceulsa fee schedule for the purpose of implementing some new fire department use fees. Why don't we start with Chief Neff providing a present question on the actual request.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Excuse me. So this fire department user fee proposal went to Public Safety Committee. A few weeks ago, we had a meeting and discussed this entire presentation. They asked some questions that come out of that meeting that we've addressed, and at that point, they decided they wanted to break the full council. So here I am this evening to give you this presentation. Why a fire department user fee? So currently, the way staff looks at this is tax revenues utilized to purchase, repair, maintain equipment, use for trading, payroll purposes, and any other operational costs of the department being incurred. That being said, that allows us to respond to structured fire and do our emergencies that may come across to us. It's a belief that once these services are rendered, that the end user should pay some sort of nominal fee for those as a way to recoup several more costs. Quite frankly, it's part of good business. That's where the user fee term came into play. Some other examples for this is ambulance service. If you call and have an ambulance respond to your residents, or you yourself, or somebody that you know, you pay taxes for that ambulance service already, but when they respond, you're also going to get a bill submitted to you for that service if you take that ride in that ambulance. Another example would be swimming pools. We have a public swimming pool out there. Tax dollars paid to maintain, maintain that, keep it operational, pay the staff, but everybody pays to go swimming in order to try to make them cross. So moving on, we did some research with some local insurance. This was not all encompassing. We didn't call every insurance provider in Osceulsa, obviously, but the vast majority all show on their policy, on their homeowner's policy, they allow up to a $500 fee to be charged. Simply submit an invoice to them, they turn that in to their insurance company, the insurance company pays that fee. On the commercial side, we've seen $1,000 seems to be the typical number that they would allow on commercial or industrial fires to be charged. When do we invoice these fees? So it's not every time we roll out the door. We're not looking to try to charge somebody every time we return the wheels on an apparatus. At any structure vehicle or grass fire, there's a definition of each type of fire. So what we've done is specifically defined these types of fires that we're actually wanting to charge as you did before. We're also looking at a separate part of this. I might have got my slides mixed up here. But there's also an inspection side to this component. I think I got my slide mixed up here, but we'll talk about that here in just a minute. But the structured fire fee side of it is for vehicles, structures, and grass fires. We'd like to use FEMA resource typing rates. These are rates that FEMA sets out for government entities to utilize that we can charge, and those would be up to a maximum amount. We'd like to charge government and religious organizations. A lot of times, these are bigger facilities within our community. They actually pay no taxes per se. They're owned by the general public. These, again, would be a resource, FEMA resource typing fee up to $1,000. Capping that, we're not going to try to go out and try to get a huge exorbitant amount of money. But again, these maximum rates within that resolution are going to be set. So you folks are going to tell us what we're going to be allowed to charge. We're not going to be able to go out and just decide on our own. This will all be set in our resolution. Another area that we'd like to look at is service categories outside of our response district. This in no way changes any of our 28D mutual aid agreements. If New Sharon's asking for help, we're going to help them. There's going to be no charge commercially if they come here. What we're suggesting is when the Osceulsa Fire Department responds to an area that's outside of our jurisdiction and there's no help there at all from the responding agency, we use New Sharon as an example. If they, we have a fire in New Sharon, they don't respond, and we have to go by ourselves and finish it, we would ask that we could charge that rate as well. That's a safe capped amount. Again, that's only if they don't come and assist. So next slide is our resource typing fees, and I'll discuss on these real quickly. You think about the cost of some of this apparatus, and it's really not that high per hour. I'm really kind of shocked at some of these. So our fire command vehicle, that's what we, our Tahoe, that's $19 an hour. Half-ton pickup that we utilize for getting staff there and hauling equipment back and forth, $12.30 an hour. A brush truck, $22.85 per hour. Water tender, which we utilize to haul water out in the country, $28.70. One of our larger fire trucks, engine is '74, '75, or '77, it is $72.25 per hour, and then the aerial is $100 per hour. Personnel rates, typically those will be an hourly pay plus benefits. Within this calculations that I'll show you here in just a little bit, we use about a $37 per hour rate, and we think that's close for rates, personnel rates. So that's what we'd be looking at for charter fees based upon that. We are looking at three distinct fees, one being the structured fire fee, the other being the vehicle and grass fires, and then finally, safety inspections. The safety inspections, we'll get into that here in just a few minutes, but the structured fire definition, I'm not going to read this thing to you, and I'm sure you've all read it. All three of these fire definitions are basically the same. If we go to respond to that house and we have to pull a hose line, hold all of our people there, and extinguish the fire, that's a structured fire. Okay? If we go to your place of residence and you just have a little pan on the stove, and we're able to take it outside, that's not considered a structured fire. That would not be considered a fee. Okay? Vehicle fires. We broke those into two different definitions, one the passenger vehicle. Passenger vehicle is essentially the same as a structured fire. We go there, we have to stretch the hose line, we have to keep personnel there, extinguish that. The passenger vehicle fire, again, we don't receive any tax dollars for passenger vehicles per se, but it does cost us time and equipment to go extinguish those. The second side of this, and those passenger vehicle fire fees are, we'll talk about those when we get into fees, here, but they're $300. Commercial vehicle, this is a whole different animal. When you talk about semis running up and down the road, they have a lot of product, they have a lot of fire loads within those. Again, those, if we have to pull that hose line, expend personnel, and spend time out there. Those commercial vehicle fees, we'd like to see up to $2,500. They can get in us quite a bit of time for us out there with the resources that we have. And those commercial vehicles will be defined by USDOT. Okay, so that's what we're, if they're running under a USDOT carrier, whether it's UPS, FedEx, Joe's Trucking, that's how we're going to define that commercial vehicle. So a previous council question was whether any other cities in Iowa were doing this. We brought this to you, this was one of the questions that came out. There are other cities within Iowa who's doing this. Centerville, Hampton, LaMars. There's other cities that are doing bits and pieces of these components. We use LaMars as a comparable. It's relatively close, are same size. As you'll see in the next slide here, we did not go as high as what LaMars did. We stayed under their rates. We felt that those rates that we put forward would be a good starting point, not trying to, again, not trying to make a huge amount of money here, but just offset some costs. So here's our estimated, excuse me, here's our estimated revenue for the past four years, five years. As you can see, our numbers for residential house fires stay pretty consistent. They stay pretty consistent. In 2015, currently, we charge no fees for any of this. Okay, so there's zero, I mean, zero income from any of this. In 2015, we had 15 residential fires. If we charged the $500, that would have brought us in $7,500. We had one commercial fire that year at $1,000. That would have generated us $8,500. LaMars, who has this fee in place, their total fees would have been $7,500 and $5,000, combined to $12,500 figure. So again, we stayed just about 50% of what LaMars runs on these. They charge up to $1,000 on residential and up to $5,000 on commercial industrial. As you go down through there, you can see in 2018, we had 12 residential fires and three commercials. Again, that's $90,000 that would have brought in to our city budget. Conversely, if we'd been running a LaMars fee, we'd have been about $21,000. And there is a substantial difference when you, the commercial fires is where you start really seeing the big difference in dollars. So the next slide kind of shows us this amount of, this was one of the questions that came out of Public Safety Committee, is how much does it typically cost us to do a house fire? What I pulled here was a very small residential house fire on South Fourth. As you can see, we were on scene about an hour and a half. We had the half-ton pickup, we had a command vehicle, we had two fire engines, five full-time staff, seven reserve staff. Fuel, investigations, and reporting, all that combined came up to $927. So it's not just necessarily the time we spend on scene, we come back, we have to refit all the equipment, we have to get everything back in shape. So again, that's a pretty small call right there, and as you can see, that $500 fee that we charge gets some of the costs back for us. We all know the money's getting harder and harder to come by at budget time. Jumping into the vehicle and grass fire fees, grass fires can vary quite a bit. Typically, we have about nine per year, so there's about $2,700. Passenger vehicle fires, about seven of those, so there's $2,100 there. Again, those numbers really don't run as consistent. It doesn't seem like as a structured fires because you get wet weather. It's just, it's the nature of the beast, I guess. But those are over the same five-year span is where we got those numbers. Am I going too fast? Any other questions yet that you want to address before we?
We talked about this, but I'm not sure I remember it right. But if there's a township call, and then they are assigned to a fire station, is that correct?
Correct.
Or you say Watcher?
Okay. So as an example, so what you're saying is a particular township has to either contract or have their own fire service within their area. So as an example, the city of Fremont contracts with Cedar Township Fire Department to provide them with fire protection. Conversely, Lincoln Township contracts with the city of Osceulsa to have fire protection. So as an example, Watcher covers Rose Hill area, okay? But again, we mutually aid with all of them. Now, I don't know.
Okay, I understand mutual aid, we're all going to help everybody if we need it. But, okay, so you get the call, and it's a two-part question, because how does 911 decide who to call?
It's based off of their, off of response districts. 911 certainly knows in their CAD system where that address is and what fire district that is responsible for that.
Okay. Would Watch, the Watcher area, would they automatically go to Watcher? Or are they automatically going to come here because we've got the facility?
No, well, currently, they would go to Watcher, yes. The call will always go to them first. If they don't respond.
If they don't go, then we charge. If they go, then it's mutual aid.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move into the safety inspections a little bit. So the first column here is inspections that we currently perform at no charge. We've just always done this since I've been here. We go out annually and inspect licensed daycares. This is not in-home daycare. This is your little bit larger facilities. It is required by the state that those be inspected. Again, they fall back, let the local authorities have the jurisdiction to do those inspections. Quite honestly, if we don't do them, they're not going to get done. The state doesn't have the inspectors to go out and get those, all of those completed. We do regular license inspections. We go out and make sure that the, now, this is for on-premise consumption, okay? We don't inspect the Casey's or the, you know, the local convenience stores, but this is for on-premise consumption. And then we have re-inspections of the above. So if anybody doesn't pass, we have to go back and check them. At times, we can go back, a couple times, usually by the second time, they've gotten pretty well squared away. But, so currently, those are done at no charge. Some inspections that are not performed right now, but we are proposing, is healthcare facilities, excluding the hospital. These are some areas that we feel the staff that should be looked at. We're talking about nursing homes, adult daycares, group homes, assisted livings. These are also supposed to be inspected by the state. However, again, with state staffing, sometimes this gets a little bit, it might be two years before they get around to them. Sometimes with staffing, we've been out and done public safety education events, whether we'll do a quick walkthrough with the folks and notice things that is kind of giving some guidance. But we'd like to start implementing these on a regular basis, just simply for the safety of our people that are in those homes.
Quick question on that, Chief. Are those all inspections that are mandated now at state and are being achieved all the ones you're proposing?
The ones that we're proposing, yes, like the nursing homes, the group homes and stuff, they're supposed to be inspected by the state. Again, please don't think I'm trying to throw the state under the bus here in any way, shape, or form.
No, my point was just, it wouldn't be quote-unquote us forcing our way into these.
That is correct. That is correct. It's much like the fireworks inspection stuff that we do for the state now. We want to work in partnership with them. We want to try to make these places safer for everybody that's there and being housed there. Again, those facilities are high-risk. The people living there usually aren't very ambulatory. We're showing up probably, if we get a call like that, we're going to be behind the eight ball right off the bat. We know the place has been inspected, we can get some of these things corrected before we have a problem. We want to be proactive about it.
If you were to do those inspections, does that take the place of the state inspection though?
Not necessarily, but again, we want to get partnership with them. Again, just like the daycare, we send all of our forms to state, they know that has been done, and then they, that frees up some places for, quite honestly, for folks in smaller communities and they don't have the luxury of having staff that can go and perform those.
Some of the facilities have a command center inside them, a command type fire fighter center that's in these buildings. Is that done by, inspected by the fire department? Is that a contract?
You're talking about the fire alarm system? That's all done by outside, but we make sure that that inspection's been done there. So what he was, the question was there, the firearm system, the sprinkler system, we're going to want to make sure that has been done. We're not going to be inspecting that. Is that clear to everybody? We'll make sure that that inspection's been done. If it's not, we'll get that order and a company will come in and do those. The group homes is one that's a little bit unique. These group homes can be set up and basically a residential structure. They can have very, very little, if any, other than just smoke detectors installed. So those are some that we really feel should be at least looked at, you know, on a regular basis. Again, the clientele, we want to make sure that they're protected, along with the staff that works there. My daughter worked at one when she was just out of high school. I don't know that they get a lot of emergency training per se. If we can help them with that type of stuff from where they're as well, that's what we'd be trying to do.
So is the annual estimate the total for our town? Like, okay, group home, $75 per inspection, but you got the $225. I'm trying to clear up those $225.
That's how many we have in our community.
Okay.
So it's times what we want to have. Yes, yes. So onto this estimated revenue, this is what, excuse me, we're recommending. So healthcare facilities, that's $250 per bed. We've done our numbers, that would be annually about $685 per year. Assisted living, same number, we can run right down those, run right down that list. Re-inspections, we never know on those. Those could be, they're going to be minimal amount, I would guess, probably less than $250. Hopefully, they get better as we go along. That's the intent, kind of like the rental inspection. As we get going, they're going to be knowing what we're looking for. So off the safety inspections, again, not a huge amount of money that we're looking to collect here, about $2,600. But if we're able to go out and get those done and make the community safer for those places, we'd like to see that accomplished. So wrapping things up here, our recommendations are residential structured fire fees up to $500. Commercial industrial fires up to $1,000. Grass fires up to $300. Passenger vehicle fires up to $300. Commercial vehicle fires up to $2,500. Use resource, FEMA resource typing fee for any government structures or religious facilities. And then down the other column, the healthcare facilities, as you can see listed out there. The final slide brings us to if all the user fee recommendations presented are adopted. Safety inspections, $2,600. Fires on the average is going to be about $7,900. That gives us roughly $10,500 of revenue generated per year. That's not a ton of money, but that will help offset vehicle operations and some vehicle repair costs. But I'm not saying guys don't give us money to get stuff fixed, it's just, it can help us, help offset some of the money that you have to come up with anyway.
If the nursing homes are inspected by the state, I don't think the state charges them for that, no? It's a mandatory, they have to do it, doesn't it?
Yes, they do not, the, yes, they have to do it, but it's like the schools. They have to do the schools, but they don't charge them a fee.
So if we're going to do them again, I understand the partnership, but it's got to be some pushback.
Well, and I may be.
I'm not going to do it twice.
I've been in contact with some of the inspectors of State Fire Marshal Office, and they're just not able to get around to every one of them. My thought would be if they've had one done by the state that year, maybe we can back that one out and go help them somewhere else. But I know that they are constantly looking for partnerships to work with the State Fire Marshal's office. We've worked with them on the high school, we've worked with them on the, they're now paying us to do the inspections on the.
With a written partnership, and we can say, okay, you aren't going to get hit twice, you know, that will look a lot better and accessible and better.
Well, yeah, they've been inspected already, it doesn't make sense for them to say here to do again.
That could definitely be something we can, again, I just, I talked to them some, I know that. I know that, again, they're short-staffed and are always welcoming.
You get up there.
Huh?
That's true. That's my idea. So you mentioned the schools and doing those. You're saying that the state would charge the schools, but if we do it for the state, the state pays us?
Well, I hesitate to say that right now, Councilor Gates. We go out, again, there are just so many schools and inspectors to be done, they just don't have the staffing to get them all done. So, that being said, they'll call us once in a while and have us go out and walk through with them just to speed the process up so they can, and we don't charge them for that and they don't charge either.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
That's understood.
Multiple bodies can cover the area quicker than one person covering the entire area.
So is it fair to say then that because the state is shorthanded and can't get out to all the facilities, that it is possible that a nursing home might go a couple of years or even three years and not have an inspection if we don't offer the service?
It could be possible. You know, again, they're trying to hit the, they've got hospitals and high schools are going to be their, their two public top libraries, and then it's going to go, it's going to break down from there. Again, it's, I hesitate to say they, I would think they'd get to them within two years. I don't think they'd go past that. I really, really just don't see it. But there are a lot of nursing homes in the state of Iowa if you think about how many is just in one community and trying to get out and get those, get those all done. Any questions for Mike?
Just one question for, for Mike. If we look at it from a taxation standpoint, is everything that we do for the fire department, is that all part of the A-ten levy?
Yes.
So it's not a matter of saying, okay, raising it to races ten-five? I mean, that option doesn't present itself because we'll max out with the A-ten levy on?
Correct, or maxed out, in fact. We're actually taking additional revenue from franchise fees to pay for equipment. And so we're, we're, we're trying to move, we can't bring taxes any higher, but we're diverting funds that would otherwise be allocated for infrastructure to pay for things like the fire department would need such as equipment. So it's the A-ten levy plus franchise fees.
Are we maxed out on the franchise fees?
Yeah.
So to that point, another option would be to generate this would be, for instance, look at it that way.
Yeah, I believe that's a valid point. As far as what we as a city can do to generate additional revenue, we're extremely, most of our property tax levels are maxed out from the general operations side. As we talked about during the budget meetings, that leaves franchise fees, which are currently at three percent for residential, one and a half percent for industrial, and a few percent for commercial. So we could go up to five percent for each of those categories. That's, outside of that, there really are no other operating revenue sources for us in the city in terms of general fund expenses.
And from a, from a general sense, I'd like to, not taxing everybody from their specific users, so I'm okay with that, I guess, but when you look at the dollar amount of ten-thousand-five-hundred in the scheme of things, is there going to be administrative costs, headaches, all of those things that need you to take care of, to do the invoicing, the collections, all of that? Again, I like that we're getting the fees from the user of the service, but at the same token, do we create a bigger headache that maybe we should look at it some way, somewhere else? I mean, we've got a pretty large budget overall, and ten-thousand-five-hundred is not.
I can think of.
I'm not trying to minimize this, but.
So be very excited about raising revenue a different way or addressing, yeah, I think that's a fair point. I, I think there's a concern that if you don't ever enact something, sometimes you'll be, you'll never actually charge those users for their specific service. So I think Mark was trying to present of, hey, we're just trying to dare foot in the door with the one, you know, the half of the fees that other places are charging. That's not to suggest that we come back every year and increase them, but it is difficult to get fees in place. We talked about this maybe nine years, maybe ten years ago. There was quite a bit of pushback. We're spending more, more time on this, ten-thousand-five-hundred dollars, and sometimes we go on much bigger ends. So it's a fair point, Councilor Gates. It does create additional fees.
I think the man-hours and half-hours, the first part of your presentation is long overdue. The second part, I gotta, I gotta look at that a little harder. If it's just going to be a money grab, I mean, if we're doing it, okay, that means we have to do it. And then if we're busy, what do we do? We'll be like the state. That's the same problem. They're supposed to inspect boilers every year, but they don't get them, and they know that, and they try to do the best they can. But I guess, that's my view.
So I'm sure I understood you. You're okay with the, well, the fire fees, okay, and the inspections, okay?
On these cases, because Chief's helped with this for a long time, there's times, and it's not a lot of times, that they called us because we've got to take red trips, and there's another way to go, and we don't get anything for it because the state's got these rules that you get hardly anything for. Am I saying that right, Michael?
Yeah.
So this just helps us, okay, it would help them to think about, now, you're really good, or don't you? And we want help. I mean, and like you said, mutual aid, this is, you know, you have a fire like we've had, everybody shows up, and that's the way we all want it.
I think there is time, but if we're going to enact the fees for services that we're already providing and that are typically covered by an insurance claim, those, I don't have an issue with those. I would struggle tonight to enact the inspection fees for things that we, that we're not currently doing without considering that a little more.
I wanted to clarify something that you said, Chief, that we do these inspections now at the request of these facilities from time to time.
Okay, so the ones that we do currently are the daycare, licensed daycare. We do those for the state. Wow. We do those for the state. We send the paperwork to them. Those are covered by us. So we do those.
Already.
Already. For no fee.
No reimbursement.
No reimbursement. The second, the other one that we do is the liquor license inspections. We do those, that's a, we do that as a local ordinance here to make sure that those facilities are safe for the general public when they go in and do business at that particular establishment. So those, those two things, we do do now currently and have done them for twenty years.
So the liquor, we don't charge for that?
We do not charge for a liquor license, and we do not charge for any re-inspections, and some of those we do have to go back a couple of times on.
We used to do churches, didn't we?
That, if we did, that was before my time. I'm not saying we didn't, but that was before my time. We'll still do many safety, but we still do business safety inspections. We'll, we'll still, a lot of it, calling them once, safety inspection, we do, we charge.
On request.
Yes, on request. But those two, the licensed daycare and the liquor license are two that we do currently
And the others, we would not be enacting any requirement that, that the healthcare facilities, assisted living, or whatever, that they have any requirement to be inspected locally, but if they called on us to help meet the state mandate, then we would apply a fee.
May I, she could look at it that way? I mean, that hadn't really come through that way, that typically, we were just, as this was presented tonight, we were going to just make contact with those places and set up those, see where their last state inspection was and, and proceed from there. Had this, if this is approved, be after the first year, when this would all take effect. I think if we get into that mixed bag of trees with if the state calls and wants help, we're going to get into the, I think we're going to get jammed up. I, I don't think, I think we need to take it all, or as far as that new stuff, break it into those groups like we talked about. If you're good with the fire user fees, okay. Or if you're good with what we currently do and you want to enact those pieces of that pie, but I don't think we better try to get intermixed in. I just think that's going to cause a problem for our staff.
Other questions for the chief?
Where's the revenue go, general fund?
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. The agenda item is one where we consider a resolution amending the fee schedule for the purpose of implementing the fire department user fees. We've talked about inspection fees. We've talked about fire service fees. Chief was throwing the idea out of splitting the two. So I guess I'll open the floor for a motion.
I believe it's clear.
Okay.
I'd second that.
Splitting the fire department inspection, I'd second that.
Okay, I don't think we need to vote on splitting them as much as, I don't take that as, under Robert's rules, that's what we're going to do.
But the item says, it just reads the fire fees under the bill. Does it really kind of split already, doesn't it?
Yeah, so Mayor, if you look at the resolution that's attached, it's broken into fire response fees and one of the, or inspection fees in the second side category. So why don't we, we'll take them one at a time. Do we have a motion in support of the fire inspection, or, excuse me, of the, yeah, of the fire response fees?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Walling?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Druss?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Odison?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Now let's address the inspection fees. Do we have a motion supporting the inspection fees?
And that would be that we would charge an inspection fee for ours and theirs and that. And, yeah, if called by, and we expect the other to charge us that.
That's, that's correct.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Any discussion on that?
I'm sure I keep the motion.
Okay, so, so what Scotty is, is saying is that for all the inspections we currently do anyway, now we would charge a fee for doing those, but if we were called, asked by, say, the state, you know, please go do this, then there would be a fee attached to that as well.
And in other words, these that we're already doing, we're not charged. And then it says, well, you go out and start a nursing home, and in other words, he asks them, and charges these.
Last item.
I think that would be the problem.
Yeah, that was your, she said we didn't want to get into Iowa, if I understood your correctly.
That's correct. I'm all for trying to charge what we already do for those fees, but I think if we get into that, I think the problem's going to be if the state calls and says, hey, we can't get this done, can you go charge for it? Then we're going to be, I think, I just think it's going to create confusion for the staff on our part. I really do.
What we're doing now, we do it for free, why do we do that?
Because there's never been a fee applied to it.
Well, why do we go?
The daycare, because the state requires those.
They called you, phoned us up and said we, that's what I'm trying to get.
Yes, they cannot get to all those, so we do those for the state. For the state of Iowa, for a fire marshal, for the department, human health, and human services.
You weren't pulling the list and we're just going out there because?
That is correct.
Right now.
They have to have that piece of paper from us before they can get their stamp from the state. Yeah, yes, has to be posted.
But if the state can't do it, are you required, if the state calls you to do an inspection, are you required, is the Oskey Fire Department required to do that, or could you say no? And is it, if, if the state's, and this gets probably too deep, if the state is requiring the inspection and they're asking us to do it because they don't have time, who should we be charging for that? Should we be charging the state because the state's the one who typically does it?
That's the way you know I'd do it.
Yes, that's right.
Because this is the odd thing is, the state doesn't charge, and then we have to help them out, and then we're going to charge.
I don't know what daycares cost anymore. I haven't had daycare in years, but it's twenty-five dollars. You know, I don't think it's an exorbitant amount, but that's up to you folks to decide. We have, we're going to go do them. If the state calls and asks us, answer your question, well, the state calls us, we don't have to go do them, but we're going to go do them. Because I'm not going to be responsible if something happens tomorrow and the state says, why didn't you go look at that? We're going to go do them. Whether we charge for them or not, we have them. Again, we're just trying to be proactive and maybe try to offset some costs somewhat.
So does that help everyone's understanding?
Does the motion remain as, as it is?
So we would charge for the ones we're currently doing?
Or is it the ones, when you get called by the state, I'm sure I understand.
Well, you know, I'm confused because I think Mark should need to.
Right. So I think probably the direction you're going then is to not go after the ones that the state does.
Because we have to, let's break it out.
There is tomorrow's quote of the paper.
We should smell my name like.
EJ.
Am I in the question then?
Well, in essence, enhancing the understanding of it, but with, with your second, is that okay with you? Yep, okay.
No.
Somebody read it, love it.
You better read it.
You got it down yet, Amy? Because I don't.
I assume we're approving it as it was written in the resolution, but it's under the inspection fee expulsion of it.
Right, right, and so.
No, that's not.
We are, the mayor and councilor currently doing, so the approval, the motion approving the, the resolution, striking from the inspection fee section of the resolution, healthcare facilities, assisted living, group homes, those, three, everything else would be approved with your.
Okay.
As presented. That's how I see it.
Yeah, the daycare, it's like. I still want to vote on separately. I'm going to vote no on the fire part. Inspection.
Inspection.
That's why I asked, we should vote on separately. Fire response and inspection.
So then if that's the case and you want to look it up separately, then it'd be the motion to approve the inspection fees to include licensed daycare, liquor license, and re-inspections.
Does that work for the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Any further comments? Roll call, please.
Gates?
No.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Druss?
No.
Moore?
Yes.
Odison?
Yes.
Walling?
Or those that are all ones?
No.
Inspection.
We're doing inspections first.
Yeah, we both have.
We've already. And it passed.
Yeah. No. We already did the fire response part. This is only inspection.
No.
Okay. Can you get the three-three, so we can? So we can, so we'll go on to the next meeting. Adam H.
We already have a session on this, or what?
I won't be here till I was on the... He could come back one more time.
Consider a resolution accepting the substantial completion of the Division One of the Phase Two Sanitary Sewer System Improvements Project by TK Concrete, and approving a partial release of the retainer amount. TK completed Division One of the Phase Two Sanitary Sewer System Improvements Project that involves sanitary sewer replacement in various locations, first one being at north of J Avenue East and east of North Third Street. The next one was across AM New West, east of Highway four thirty-two. The third one was across Ninth Avenue East between Fifteenth Street and Sixteenth Street. And the fourth one was CM New West, between North I Street and North G Street. Project has been inspected by Garden and Associates, construction work found to be acceptable. The final contract amount of the project, nine hundred thirty-two thousand four hundred twenty-two dollars and ninety cents, after an increase of thirty-three thousand one hundred thirty-six dollars and ninety cents, which was three point seven percent from the original contract amount, which was eight hundred ninety-nine thousand two hundred eighty-six dollars. That was awarded at this April sixteenth, twenty eighteen council meeting, and the total construction cost in the amount of nine hundred thirty-two thousand four hundred twenty-two dollars and ninety cents included a five percent retainer for an amount of forty-six thousand six hundred twenty-one dollars and fifteen cents. Although the contractors completed the construction work, they have damaged the chip-sealed street surface on North Fourth Street between J Avenue and K Avenue, which is an area outside the scope of work. TK Concrete proposed to repair the damaged street surface in the spring of twenty-twenty, and as a result, the retainer amount has been reduced from five percent to point five percent of the contract amount, taking it from forty-six thousand six hundred twenty-one dollars and fifteen cents to four thousand six hundred seventeen dollars and sixty cents. The amount withheld for retainer is two hundred percent of the value of the repairs to be completed, and this reduction in the retainer is in accordance with Section twenty-six point thirteen of the Iowa Code. So with City Council approval, the project will be accepted as substantially completed. Approval of the substantial completion of the project activates the warranty and authorizes the partial release of the retainer, leaving the amount of forty-two thousand three dollars and fifty-five cents to the contractor thirty days after project acceptance. If no claims are filed against the project, then the remaining retainer, four thousand six hundred seventeen dollars and sixty cents, will only be released after the street repairs on North Fourth Street are completed. And then we've got a table with the total cost breakdown here. So staff is recommending City Council approve the resolution accepting completion of Division One of the Phase Two Sanitary Sewer Systems Improvements Project, and partial release of the final retainer in the amount of forty-two thousand three dollars and fifty-five cents in thirty days, if no claims are filed against the project. The remaining four thousand six hundred seventeen dollars and sixty cents of retainer will be released after the repairs to North Fourth Street. Do we have a motion to support it?
Why don't they just fix the street now? We get to be done with it. There's no winter yet.
So the contractor who does this repair, Norris, has told they're busy for the season, it's almost a new season, so they, they propose to do it next spring.
It's your call, David.
Right.
Why don't we do it, Charlie?
We can do it, I mean, we are already tied up with our speaks that we are trying to finish up.
Thanks.
Any other thoughts? Roll call.
Pelger?
Yes.
Druss?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Odison?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Pelger?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Adam I. Consider an ordinance amending Chapter fifteen point oh four, which is the building code of the Oskaloosa Municipal Code, second reading. City of Oskaloosa states, in building code fifteen point oh four, states that a building permit shall expire and become null void if the work is not commenced within a hundred and twenty days from the date of issuance, or if the work is suspended or abandoned for a hundred and twenty days. The twenty fifteen International Residential Building Code that was adopted by the city states that a building permit shall expire and become null void if the work is not commenced within, within a hundred and eighty days from the date of issuance, or if the work is suspended or abandoned for a hundred and eighty days. So city staff is recommending a change to the city ordinance to one hundred and eighty days to be consistent with the twenty fifteen International Residential Code. Staff also wishes to correct some errors referencing former versions of the International Fire Code and the International Building Code, and the attached ordinance updates the amended sections of Oskaloosa's Building Code accordingly. So, this is the second reading, do we have a motion of support? Any discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Druss?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Odison?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Pelger?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Adam J. An ordinance amending Chapter fifteen point twelve, the Electrical Code of the Oskaloosa Municipal Code, this is the third reading. On January first of twenty eighteen, the newest edition of the National Electric Code, known as twenty seventeen NEC, went into effect in the state of Iowa. Municipals must adopt the same edition of the NEC that the state has adopted. Oskaloosa's municipal code is in need of attention, as it still references the twenty fourteen NEC, and includes other references which have become outdated. And so the ordinance would be updated and amended with adoption of the twenty seventeen edition of the National Electric Code. It would remove references to the city engineer and replace the electrical inspector or development services director as appropriate. And number three, would also remove references to Iowa Power and Light Company, replacing it with Mid-American Energy Company. Staff is recommending approval, do we have a motion of support? Any discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Moore?
Yes.
Odison?
Yes.
Walling?
No.
Yates?
Yes.
Pelger?
Yes.
Druss?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Gets us to the end of the regular agenda. Any reports from city staff, city manager, anything?
Mayor Council, just a reminder that it is Chief Neff's final council meeting tonight, and I wanted to tell him, I really do appreciate the time that we've spent working together. Mark was appointed to chief prior to my arrival, so I've probably known Chief Neff as fire chief for ten years that I do, so thank you, Mark, for your service and dedication to the community, and best of luck on the next one. There will be a party, and it's October seventeenth, from three to six P M. at the fire station, so we hope, certainly encourage council and the public to attend as well.
City clerk, can you top a party announcement? City attorney, anything?
Nothing, thank you.
City council members, Bob Ross.
I would like to just remind everybody, or maybe let everybody know that October twenty-third, the daily auditorium is hosting Dr. Willie Jolly, who is one of the top five motivational speakers in the world, as voted by Toastmasters International. So, and he's come to Oskaloosa, so take advantage of that opportunity, I think tickets are for sale through the auditorium, show at seven o'clock, so take advantage of that opportunity while we have it.
Joe?
Nothing.
Ryan?
Nothing.
Scotty?
No, thank you.
Doug?
Nothing nice from you.
Tom?
Eleven years ago, when I got this job, and I'm enjoying all of it, but Pam Longren was a mentor to me, very much so. Parts and affairs go out to Pam, and Pam is the loss of him.
Well spoken. Yeah, Jim Longren also was a city council member, and I've heard from time to time that he acted as a mentor for a number of our city council members over the years. He also acted as a friend and mentor to me in a lot of ways. And so with his service to the city of Oskaloosa through the, through the city council service, also as a judge, also as an attorney in town with numerous cases that he worked on, also as the city, or as the county attorney, he's been a tremendous influence in Oskaloosa for a number of years. And so his, his sense of humor and big picture kind of attitude, and that it seemed like no matter what was going wrong, he could find something to smile about and say, we'll get through this. That's something that I think all of us have tried to adopt as we know him, is to be able to put things in perspective and work with the cards we're dealt. So Oskaloosa's gonna miss it. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Second. On favor, say aye. Richard.
Say. You're welcome. Here, bash, I'll vote it.